Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no
Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. To ensure there's no Some exercises will be undertaken at night and people will be on the structure. Warwickshire Wildlife Trust objected to the proposal on the grounds of the impact of noise and increased activity and the impact on protected species. Warwickshire Wildlife Trust objected to the proposal on the grounds of the impact of noise and increased activity and the impact on protected species. Warwickshire Wildlife Trust objected to the proposal on the grounds of the impact of noise and increased activity and the impact on protected species. That there's an occupant management plan to control visibility and noise from human activity. And a condition to control airborne and waterborne particulates to ensure there's no pollution. In terms of drainage and flood risk, the buildings and the structures proposed on site would be within flood zone one. The Environment Agency and the lead local flood authority have both agreed the details of a drainage strategy, which is included in the proposed conditions, recommended conditions. And they were both satisfied and haven't raised objections to the development. In terms of highways, there is no objection from the County Highway Authority. The access into the site from Coton Road is acceptable and there's parking on the Leamontston site. There's no objection from highways. And in terms of impact on heritage, there's no material harm to any heritage assets. The nearest being over 450 metres away. In terms of the planning balance, the policy harm to Greenbelt is substantial, considered substantial in this case. The actual harm to the openness of Greenbelt is moderate and all other harms are considered to be limited. In determining the application, members must assess the final balance with the harms on one side and the benefits put forward by the applicant on the other to assess whether or not they amount to very special circumstances that would outweigh the harm to Greenbelt. And the applicant has put forward the case for very special circumstances and if I can run through those. The following information also includes the updated details which were received from the applicant since the publication of my report and they were submitted in response to the objection from North Warwickshire Borough Council. They're stating that the legislation requires the fire service to train adequately. For several years until 2013, Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service used a breathing apparatus facility at the Fire Service College in Gloucestershire until that became unviable to use for financial and logistical reasons. The fire service currently uses the limited training facilities at Dunchurch and they have on occasions to travel as far as North Wales to meet the remains or to ensure they meet all their training requirements. Since 2013, Fire and Rescue have been looking for alternative facilities across Warwickshire. In 2015, Warwickshire County Council Cabinet agreed further exploration of options and two sites were identified at that time. One at Writin and one near Foleston, near Rugby, but they were eventually deemed as unsuitable. A further 34 sites were considered, including 19 owned by Warwickshire County Council and also a site at Coventry Airport. Seven sites were listed from which the site at Hollywell Business Park in Southham was chosen. Following that, some planning consent was granted in 2016 for that site in Southham for the fire services' trained facilities. But the development of that has proved to be over a million pounds over budget and as a result of that, an alternative and as a result of that, an alternative site needed to be found. For operational reasons, collaboration with West Midlands Fire Service was pursued and that was on a site in Radford Road in Coventry. That was pursued for a period of time, but after a year, that fell through actually. And the Southam site was reviewed again at that point. But by that time, the site in Southam had been allocated for employment development and was no longer available. There was then another search for alternative sites, looking at smaller sites that would be more cost efficient. Kingsbury Water Park was identified at that point and it was, it's a former Warwickshire County Council Youth Education Centre with an existing building and a climbing tower which could be converted to provide in that existing building the classroom based training facility. A search was then carried out for other smaller sites in close proximity to Kingsbury Water Park. And the Kingsbury Weir site, which is subject to the third application I referred to, and also this site at Leamaston Depot were identified. The Leamaston site is in close proximity to the Kingsbury Water Park and would allow the theoretical and practical training to be delivered efficiently and effectively. There's a benefit of conducting major incident scenarios using the three sites together and joining with the Environment Agency and other emergency service providers. The use jointly of the sites in close proximity to each other has benefits for the public purse and the local community and to the environment itself, reducing travel and keeping firefighters within Warwickshire during their training. If I can just take you through the rest of my photos of the site, so we're looking here at the drone photo of the site. And this is closing down onto the actual application site itself. I'm stood here with the gantry behind me and the weir behind me looking towards the, towards the north west. And then swinging round the view, you can see it's largely grass and there are a couple of the small trees in the distance that would be removed. The site's got an existing concrete path around the outside and this serves the emergency storage building that was recently constructed on site to allow HGVs to travel around the area without having to turn. This is looking towards the lakes and the little, the weir and the island between the two weirs. And this is the gantry structure that's above the two weirs. And this is looking back down towards the application site from the access road. This is a photo I've taken from the eastern side of the River Tame, south of looking back towards the the weirs and the gantry and the application site is just beyond. This is a Google image I've taken and it's taken from the Birmingham Road Bridge over the River Tame, looking towards the application site ringed in red there. And then again, a Google image taken from Coton Road. You would get this view if you were sat at the traffic lights. It's a single carriageway there over the bridge and you would get, if you were waiting at the lights, you would see the view there. Again, it's in the distance of the application site. And now, if I can take you through the drone footage. So if you just bear with me. Can you just confirm, Mark, that you can see that?
Yes, go.
Yes, okay, lovely, thank you.
All right, yep.
Okay. I'll run the video and I can stop at any point if anyone would like me to. But this is showing the entrance into the application site and this is coming from Coton Road up the access road towards the Environment Agency buildings. This is coming into their facility with their storage buildings. So this now is the drone flight coming in again over that access road. The application site is there labelled on the left. And this is showing, that's the building developed a year and a half or so ago as an emergency storage building and then this is the main office buildings and the EA depot. Just shows what's already on site and then this is, you can see in the distance, the railway line. And swing around and then comes up to label the application site in the distance there. Right, so this now is flying the drone south towards Birmingham Road direction. And at this point, the drone is hovering at a height of about 10 metres and giving a 360 view round. So basically what you can see in this shot can see you, so we've deliberately done it at this height so you can see which buildings are in view at this point. So that's the emergency storage building is actually behind the trees at that point and the EA depot. And that's the view of the lake from here. So again, it would be a fleeting view from, from the railway line, which would be largely screened by the vegetation on that little island. And that tree screen between the railway line and the application site. And this is the gantry structure and the weir. And then that's Birmingham Road labelled in the background. This now is a flight flying north from Birmingham Road looking towards the application site. This is obviously flying at a much higher level than anyone would, would actually see, but it's putting the application site into context here. And flying in towards the application site. And again, now we do the same flight again, but at a lower level. So this is coming slightly further down. Again, it's at a higher level than Birmingham Road itself, but it is showing that there is screening by trees existing to the south of the application site. That's showing the access road to the site. Okay. I'll go back into. Sorry. So, sorry, bear with me. In conclusion, and to summarise, the information that adds up to very special circumstances and the green belt in this case are firstly, the importance of the need in the public interest to provide the training facilities. These are important facilities for Warwickshire, for our fire service to be fully trained. The applicant has explained a long and rigorous search process which failed to identify options for sites outside of the green belt. So there is evidence for, for the site search. The environmental advantages in having the Minerva Unit Training Facility in Warwickshire and located in proximity to the Kingsbury facility are a major benefit. And the proposal makes efficient use of the existing infrastructure on an existing developed site using the Environment Agency's access, parking facilities, et cetera. In this case, the officers have concluded that on balance, the very special circumstances put forward by the applicant outweigh the harm to the green belt and recommend approval subject to the recommended planning conditions. I'd lastly just say that actually if members are minded to support the officer's recommendation as a departure from the development plan, the application would need to be referred to the Secretary of State.
Well, thank you very much indeed. Sally, a very comprehensive presentation. I'm going to now ask, I'll grab a bit of feedback there. I'm now going to ask for any technical questions of Sally's presentation and Clive was first followed by Kate.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, mine's just on the noise assessment on, in the section headed other harms. I think you said, Sally, that the, the assessment was in relation to the usage of some portable water pumps. I'm just wondering whether there was any other noise assessment deemed necessary.
They actually
Just the water pumps?
They chose the noisiest activity, so the noisiest thing that could have been is six water pumps. And that would be used only in certain circumstances. It would be unlikely on this, in this scenario, as I say, the most likely scenario is for two fire engines to be providing the water that would be linked to a fire hydrant or using the water from the fire engine itself. The water pumps would be used in other circumstances if they need to relay water from a longer distance. And as I say, that was really the sort of loudest scenario that, that is likely, so that was used for the assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kate?
Thank you, Chair. Sally, you mentioned two things. We mentioned several things, the five metre fencing.
Yeah.
The building is between 10 and 12 metres high. And you mentioned that the fencing would avoid birds seeing activity. I don't understand that because birds fly, so they will see above that five metres. And secondly, the, the pollution from lighting, a five metre fence is not going to hide or conceal lighting within the building because of its, because of its height. I just wanted clarification about whether that fencing was all the way around. I mean, it looked pretty ugly, you know, when you just show a five metre fence, it does look pretty ugly. And whether there'll be any mitigation to conceal that ugliness, but that's for a further discussion. Thank you.
In terms of the height of the fence, the, the birds that are, we've been mindful of are the water found on the lake, so they're at a lower level anyway. So they would have an oblique view up to the facility. But in addition to that, the, there's cladding, metal cladding proposed onto the structure of the Minerva Unit itself to ensure that there's, that again screens any activity of, of, well, human activity on the outside of the building, so on the stairways and gantries. That's the purpose of that screening. So, yes, that's, it, it's not to hide the unit from birds flying over, so that wouldn't be an issue there. In terms of light pollution, the five metre high fencing, the, the lighting would be directional, it's LED lighting and it would be directional so that it's not shining outside of the compound area itself. And the condition is recommended that there's no lux spilling out over beyond the application site.
Thank you, Sally.
I'm just going to pause for a moment before I bring in councillor Cook, councillor Simpson and councillor Dibbix. Unfortunately, Sally, there's a bit of a technical issue.
Okay.
It appears that the sound wasn't working when you were doing your recap and I apologise. Could you do your recap again, please?
Yes.
Let's get that, get out and then I'll bring the other speakers in. Thank you.
Chair, sorry to interrupt. It wasn't the recap that didn't have any sound, it was the introduction to the application as a whole. So that's what Sally needs to recap. The was, the pictures were going out on the broadcast, but there was no sound. So we just need, I'm so sorry, Sally. We just need to go through like the first, first few parts of the introduction to the report.
How far in, Helen?
I've been getting messages, bear with me one second.
But we, we were able to hear it.
Yeah, we were all able to hear it, which is fine, but unfortunately any members of the public that were watching the YouTube broadcast won't have heard Sally introduce the report. So I'm just looking at the notes I've been making, so it's just a recap over the purpose of the application. Bit about the drone flight environment, it's kind of like the, up until the draining and flood, no, not that far. Sorry, I'm just going through my notes.
Chair, can I report that it can be heard on YouTube? Councillor Mark Simpson, Chair of the Planning Board is watching it, for Northwatch, is watching it on YouTube and he can hear it.
He can now, I don't think he will have heard the beginning.
He's heard it all, Chair. I have sent you a message, Chair, saying he has to leave, he has an urgent appointment. If you would consider bringing him forward, please, that would be, that would be good.
Okay, yeah, 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 fine. Oh, we're 15 minutes, okay, right. Okay, that could be slightly tricky. Okay, then, in that case then, look, I'm going to make an executive decision here. We're going to leave Sally's intro and if we need to do that, we'll go back over it. It does appear that it was limited. I, I'm going to carry on if you don't mind, just for those questions that people have raised their, their hands and then we'll move on to the questions to try and facilitate the speakers. So councillor Cook.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's possibly that I haven't picked it up or I haven't written it down. How close is the nearest domestic property to this site? It is in the report somewhere, but I can't remember where it is. How close is the nearest property? And I also just want to sort of carry on from where Kate Rolfe was a bit earlier and that is, is there any, again, I might have missed it, I did read this report at six o'clock this morning, so it's perfectly possible that I did. The screening, I mean, I'm concerned about the fence rounded etc, etc. But has there any consideration been given? Because looking at the site, some of the other buildings are well screened by, by trees on the site. Now, I realise that if you put this building where it is, it's not going to have any natural screenage or planting or anything else to protect it. But is there anything within the plan or some proposal that, that we would be able to hide some of this? Because the truth is, that building ain't pretty.
In terms of screening, there, there's not much room between the fence itself and the concrete access road that runs parallel to the weir to the east of the application site, so there isn't room for planting in the strip along there. There is
Sorry, coming back on that then, is there a particular reason? I mean, because I am concerned about this. This is the green belt and quite clearly people are rightly just sensible about it, concerned about it. Why, is there any reason why we could, the site could not be relocated slightly differently? Because it isn't a small, the building isn't that big compared with the size of the site. Is there any reason why the site has to go in exactly that position? And the other, the other point I would make, I noticed that the, which I didn't ask you, which I will ask you now, is that the obviously there's this unit, the filtration unit, which filters out the chemicals, etc, from the smoke and everything. Presumably at some, some place that what those filtrate, those filtrates will be either going into the drains or being disposed of somehow. Can you comment on that?
The filtrates are removed from sites, so they are removed, produced as solids which are removed to an appropriate site.
Thank you.
Distance of houses, I think it's the closest, so about 350 metres.
Wow.
Down to Birmingham, Birmingham Road, the bridge there and there's a house just along to the west from there and that's in the region of 350 metres.
Thank you.
In terms of relocating the site, I'm not aware of, I mean, this is the application that's been presented.
Yeah.
In terms of elsewhere on the site, I think this was the site that was offered by the Environment Agency. Whether there's some tweaking of it, I'm not sure. I think that would be a question for the applicant.
That's my point. Obviously, we do have to consider the application that's put before us. But, you know, the answer to my question relating to the screening of, I mean, which isn't particularly pretty fence either, is, you know, if it could be moved just slightly in order to allow there to be some natural screening other than the fence, that would be welcomed, I think. But thank you, you've answered my questions.
Thank you.
Right, councillor Simpson.
Thank you. My questions are kind of related to the other two buildings that are, the two sites that are close by to this one. So, given that it's an, given that the Environment Agency site is an emergency response site, presumably that's 24/7 operation. And the vehicles going into and out of the proposed site would presumably just be cars and fire engines? Would there need to be anything bigger going in and out of that site? And secondly, lighting, it looked like on one of the photos that there was some, I think it was the third or fourth photo, in the distance, that there were some tall lights. And I was just trying to work out where they were.
Shall I share my screen again? Shall I?
Yeah.
Go into that if you don't mind. See if I can just get that back up. Was it a photo?
It was a photo, yeah. It was kind of looking across from almost ground level kind of photo. I should have written down which one it was when I was looking.
Yeah, you agree?
Yeah, that one.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, so you can see these two, are they lights? I was trying to work out what they were.
Actually, sorry, if I put that on there, then I get back to it.
Yeah.
That's, it's a light for this gantry structure.
Right.
Yes, there are.
Purely for the gantry.
Operation there already. This is used as, it used to be used as for screening the water from the River Tame into the lake there. And it's now used as for water monitoring, actually, but it is in regular use, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Listen, members, I don't like breaking the flow of technical questions, but I'm aware that councillor Mark Simpson needs to go for, I think councillor Riley said about half past, so I'm going to ask that the objectors speak now. I apologize for this disruption, members, but I'm going to ask them to speak now as objectors. Then we will go back to our technical questions and then we'll go back to the supporters and the agent, if that's okay with you guys. I'm just trying to fit in everybody, these things happen. So I have got councillor Riley and councillor Simpson. Have you sorted out your timings? You've got three minutes. Councillor Riley?
Thank you, Chair. Can I invite councillor Simpson to go first, being as he has to leave?
By all means, you've got three minutes between you, when you want to go.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I do appreciate your forbearance and members' fall for letting David and I speak. I'll keep my comments as brief as I possibly can. I've been chairman or shadow chairman of the planning committee at North Worcestershire for about 20 years and a member since 1987. This is the first time we've seen an issue which was so important and I felt I really should come and try and talk to you and explain our issues myself. Our planning board have not taken this lightly. We've been trying to work with the applicant and officers for about two years to find an equitable solution. And at one stage, the Borough Council offered all of its resources to the applicant to try and find an alternative site on one of our land holdings and industrial estate or similar. And as far as I'm aware, that wasn't taken up. The issue for us, put very simply, is the green belt policy and the green belt issue. It is quite clear in the report, whether it's moderate harm or any other harm, that the harm is substantial. If it wasn't substantial, it wouldn't have to be referred to the Secretary of State. This location is key within the site. It is the only part of the site that you can see from the boundary. If the property were located somewhere else, near to the existing buildings, it would not be visible at all. The issue is purely for us down to green belt. We absolutely understand the needs of the fire service. We get all of the operational issues, but I really doubt how a 13 metre tall building sitting partially behind a five metre tall fence that's made out of old shipping containers could ever be appropriate within the green belt. Worcestershire Wildlife Trust, in their objections further into your report, have made absolutely important points as to why this isn't good. There is no justification to be on that particular location. Chairman, remember, we could have all the benefits of the fire service application and no damage to green belt if this were slightly recited within the site. We are not against what the fire service is trying to do. That's essential to all of us. But we shouldn't give up this critical site in the middle of the green belt on a nationally important migratory route for birds when an alternative site, a matter of metres away, is available. Thank you, Chair. I'll cut it at that because I know David's got other things to say.
That's perfectly right. Thank you, councillor Simpson. Right, councillor Riley, you've got about 40 seconds, is that all right?
Chair, before my 40 seconds start, can I just clarify that we are in the same three minutes because I am the county councillor for the area?
Are we doing, can I take advice on that? I apologize. If that's the case, then you are entitled to your own time specifically. I apologize if that is the case. Helen?
Yes, councillor Riley gets his own three minutes.
Apologize for that. I've got you lumped under the same banner as objectors. Okay, then, councillor Riley, then we'll just do yours and then if you have no objections, we'll move back and councillor Simpson can go off to his other meeting. Right.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for accommodating us. I'm really grateful. Chair, members, I'm here as the county councillor for the area. I'm also here as a resident of Lee Marston and also a member of the Tame Valley Wetland Partnership. We've never seen an application like this. It's been two and a half years since we've been making and the passage of information to enable decisions to be made has been chaotic, to say the least. Even to the extent that parish council haven't commented because it's never seen any proposed plans for the structures on the site. The only thing we've ever seen is a mock-up photograph of the site elsewhere. So we're a bit stuck in terms of putting forward comments. Totally agree with the view of North Worcestershire Borough Council Planning Board. This is inappropriate development in the green belt. I won't repeat the issues that have already been raised with you, Chair. What I will say is that there are some factual inaccuracies in the report. So paragraph, excuse me, paragraph 534 refers to the site having been a minerals extraction site. Let me be clear, Chair, Lee Marston has never been a minerals extraction site. It's always been a ecological offset project for the River Tame, taking out the heavy metals in the water that came from Birmingham. Secondly, Sally in her presentation has referred to the gates and the construction at the front of the site. Chair, all of this will be taken out by the EDA. These lakes have come to the end of their useful life and are going to be restored. Part of the plan is to restore the river to its original form. There is actually a restoration plan from the Environment Agency, which hasn't been shared with the board, which demonstrates wetland woodland planting conversant with the view that Mark has expressed that this is a nationally important migratory site for wetland birds. Chair, a couple of other issues, I totally support councillor Rickards' debate and views about noise. Chair, there's been no assessment of the potential noise that this site would generate. There is a filtration engine on this site. Nobody has reported technical datas of the noise that this creates and they are noisy. No consideration is taken of the fact that the site, usable operational site, extends eight metres above the sandproof fencing. Nobody has taken account of that, Chair, and it's metal boxes, it's metal boxes we farm and it's going to vibrate. Other issues to be considered, Chair, and I'm pleased that members have reported it, we consider is, we're talking about a steel structure which is so utilitarian in its image, it's bonkers. And the important thing to recognize is that this site is part of Tame Valley Wetland Partnership's ambition for an ecological offset area which referenced in the North Worcestershire draft local development plan, albeit that's not yet adopted, I understand that. Final point, Chair, there's been no 106 discussions with any interested parties from the county council. So nobody has had any conversation with Worcestershire Wildlife Trust, Tame Valley Wetland Partnership or either Lee Marston or Netherwhitaker Parish councils about how this development can be made acceptable in any way, particularly through the grounds of 106. And I think that's a great loss, Chair. Mark Simpson said, we're not trying to prevent this building. We're trying to relocate it on the other side, but nobody seems to want to talk about that.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, councillor Riley. Members, do you have any questions of councillor Riley or councillor Simpson? I've got some legacy hands potentially up here, councillor Dervix and councillor Parry. Councillor Dervix, did you want to ask any questions of councillor Simpson and councillor Riley?
I think it's just councillor Rolfe, Chair.
Okay, then, councillor Rolfe.
Yes, thank you. So councillor Simpson, in your speech just now, you mentioned that there's a more suitable site a few metres away. Have you been in discussions about this site specifically, this new potential site?
Thank you, councillor. We have tried to talk to the fire brigade and they mentioned it in the paper that was circulated last evening. Where the comment, I think, was they'd considered relocating the site to be adjacent to the other buildings, but it would cost more because of land movement issues. There's no quantification in the note as to how significant that cost is or how significantly they've considered the alternative. But all of those other buildings are not in any way visible despite their height from anywhere else. As councillor Riley just mentioned, there are longer term proposals to redevelop the whole of this site. And while the Borough Council had the site visit, the Environment Agency representative made it clear that they were intending to change the nature of the weir, to take it away, to remove the weir and all the structures there so that the area could become more managed wetland. So in reality, it's not simply our desire from a green belt perspective to put the buildings with the other buildings, but actually from a flooding and wetland management point of view, I would have thought it's far more suitable to be located away from the edge of the lake. So I can't give you a clear answer as to who spoke when and all of the issues. But the papers that were circulated last night do indicate that there has been some conversation. There was identification of a cost issue, but none of us know whether that was £10 or £10 million.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, councillor Rolfe. Councillor Parry?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I think my question's now been answered by councillor Simpson with regard to the alternative site and the costing, so. But I will just ask councillor Simpson, as to the level of engagement. There appears from what you've said, there's been very minimal level of engagement with the parish. Do you just confirm that?
Sorry, with the local parish council?
Yeah.
Better David Riley to answer, to be honest, he was more.
But also with North Warwickshire as well, there's been very, very little engagement. Is that what you're saying?
I would have preferred more engagement with the authority and particularly meaningful engagement. I think you can have engagement, but it doesn't actually get you to a full understanding of what all of the potential issues are. We certainly haven't had that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much indeed. Are there any other questions of councillor Riley, councillor Simpson? Okay, well, thank you very much indeed for your presentations, both of you. Obviously, councillor Simpson might have to make a move now to another meeting, we know the feeling. And thank you very much indeed for your presentation and well presented. Thank you. Okay, I'm now going to go back and again, I apologize for the disruption here. But also, some of those, that presentation may have sparked another couple of questions that we can ask of Sally. So, members, I've got councillor Warwick first, who's popped up quickly.
Thank you, Chair. I obviously have been having a look at the sort of relevant paragraph for the MPPF. Paragraph 147 cites renewable energy and how that is an inappropriate development of the green belt and how other factors sort of weigh when you come to consider that type of application. And a lot of the times, it comes around to the permanence of the application and the permanence of the structure and the time they will be there.
Councillor, are we having a technical question, please?
Yeah, it is a technical question. So the question I am asking is, will there be a changing weighting on this application? If, for example, the committee were to look at a time factor on it? So does that affect the weighting of the application if this structure was deemed not to be permanent, if the application was, say, limited to 30 years?
I think that would have a, make a difference if it's not a permanent, if green belt is going to be restored afterwards in terms of the openness of the green belt. That would change to some extent if it's not a permanent feature.
Councillor Dervix?
Thank you. I've got quite a lot of things that I was going to ask. Most of them have already been mentioned. But the question I've got is about pollution. In the papers, it does say that the particulate will be taken away and that there will be no spillage to the water course. I just wonder, have there been proposals to limit the spread of pollution? Because that's what it is. In the event of a spillage or an emergency or a flood that is unexpected, you know, this could well be moved a lot further away from the present site, even keeping it within the present boundary that is marked on there. If there were to be any sort of spillage, it is so close to that nationally important facility there, the wildlife site. It is part of the contingency plan for drinking water as well. You know, what measures are they going to be put in to protect that? Because, you know, accidents happen, spillages happen, you can't be certain that things wouldn't be spread. If this was a facility for somebody other than the fire and rescue services, we would be asking what environmental protection measures are they going to be put, are going to be put in place in case of accidental spillage? There is a question in there somewhere, I think.
Yeah, the application site is on flood zone one. So the buildings themselves are within flood zone one, so they're not, it's not an area prone to flooding. There's no objection from the Environment Agency or from the Leeds Local Flood Authority. And there is an agreed drainage strategy where drainage from the site has, the details have been submitted already and are conditioned. So I, from that, no objection from the Environment Agency. As I say, we're recommending the condition that the development complies with the drainage strategy put forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dervix. All right, Sally, just a couple of things that have popped up from this particular, the previous presentations. First of all is the gantry removal and the weir removal. Were you or the fire rescue service aware of that happening?
I think there was a conversation on site, but I don't know the timings of that. I don't know the details of that, I'm afraid, no.
So it hasn't been sort of submitted to you from the Environment Agency?
No, as a time scale, no. I've got no objection from the Environment Agency to the development, but they haven't cited the removal of those structures or the changes to the weir. but they haven't cited the removal of those structures or the changes to the weir.
Okay, then. And there are two other issues that have popped up. One is the noise issues. And again, perhaps you can have a think about that while we're listening to the other presentations. And if there are any other documentation on the noise element, obviously, we've mentioned about the, there's going to be toing and froing, obviously, of people coming into the facility and such like. But it's more mechanical noises which can, I mean, if it's a temporary noise, then those are normal, normal background noises. If it's a constant mechanical noise, then obviously those can be more disturbing to people and they travel quite a significant area. And the other one, now, again, this is possibly something that you may say, well, it's not for me, it's for the fire rescue service, which is far enough, or perhaps even Scott, is how much would it cost to move the site from where it is proposed on to the defra site? And I'm assuming it's the defra site. It's more than a few metres, but even so, it is within the same sort of boundary area. And I think that's something that perhaps fire rescue service would be able to answer, Sally?
Yes, I wouldn't have an answer to that, I'm afraid.
Okay, well, we'll ask that when the time comes for that one. Okay, thank you very much indeed. Members, I've got no more hands up at the moment, so I'm going to now move on to the supporters, which is the chief fire officer and the group commander, and also I've got Sam Beer, Thera, Designer Management Project. So, ladies and gentlemen, have you got any, is it an order for speaking? Got three minutes? I'm not hearing anything. Karen?
Chairman, thank you very much. Thank you for this opportunity to provide the supporting statements around this application. I feel confident we can answer the questions that have been raised. I suppose my reflections on hearing the comments raised still sit with the proximity of the proposed facility and the public and surrounding housing. So, I understand, obviously, that the wooden fencing may be regarded also as unsightly, but certainly from the images that Sally's provided, I think it indicates that the only views you would have of that would be the Birmingham Road Bridge from passing traffic and then also scant view from passengers on a passing train. But there are certainly other considerations we can give around the screening. In terms of the lighting, just wanted to reconfirm that the light pollution is part of the planning conditions, so zero lux to background. It's downlighting and it's also LED, which I think probably most people will know from the LED lights that are readily available, that there's not much throw from an LED light. So, these are directional, they're shielded in the lighting masts, and they're directed downwards onto the site. In terms of the noise assessments, as Sally also mentioned, the loudest possible kind of noise was regarded for the assessment, which is six light portable pumps. These are actually quite large engines and they provide water provision. That was seen to be one scenario that could be played out as a water relay exercise, but they would be few and far between. But it pales into insignificance against the current provision, the current use of that site by the EA and also by the fire rescue service. This is the site that's used for their high volume pumps, the Environment Agency's high volume pumps, and the decibel thresholds on those are far higher than our light portable pumps. So, definitely those in relation to our portable pumps, and then the portable pumps in relation to the noise that could emanate from the from the filtration pumps. The filtration pumps are far lower in terms of decibel output from the portable pumps. So, hopefully, that allays some concerns in terms of the assessments. And certainly, I know councillor Simpson mentioned around the impact upon bird life. I mean, part of the reason this application has taken so long has been the rigor that's been put in by Scott's team on the surveys that have been carried out, the ecological surveys. Yeah, thank you. So, you know, my position really is that this is a vital application for fire, that we absolutely must provide this training to our firefighters. And given the considerations that we provided before, I think the location that's been identified is a solid application against the, also the reutilisation of the Kingsbury sites, public money and a public facility. So, we hope that this application is approved.
Thank you very much indeed, Karen. Okay, members, are there any technical questions or questions you would like to ask of Karen? I suppose the first one, if I may jump in, is the location now then. It's obviously, it is problematic for members. Obviously, there is an industrialised, and I use that word lightly, site nearby. Comments have been made on that one, why can't we move it there, etcetera. What are your views on that one, please?
Yeah, thank you. So, the location of the site was identified through working with the Environment Agency and because of its proximity with Kingsbury. The Environment Agency is a category one responder under the Civil Contingencies Act and be working closely with them as partners within Warwickshire and to try and create a safer Warwickshire for our public. We certainly recognise that there's increasing risks around climate change and adverse weather. So, there was a benefit for us to be working on site with them. The location that was identified for the provision of this facility was in conjunction with the Environment Agency. We haven't given another site location as part of the full defra site. But certainly, we had conversations about reorientating the current facility, so it would have a lesser impact on the frontage of the riverside. And clearly, I mean, there could be further conversations about relocating it elsewhere on the site, but they haven't been available to us from the Environment Agency.
So, can I just clarify then, it's not that you're averse to that happening? From a location point of view, it doesn't have to be in that place. It could be, I'm not saying anywhere, but within a reasonable location.
I think the other key factor, Chair, was also around the the budget constraint that we have for the provision of our training. And, you know, that site seemed to be low impact ecologically as we know now, and also on the remaining Environment Agency site. So, that was the purpose of that location. Any further works would obviously increase our budgets. Even the initial landworks to assess the site come in at around, you know, almost £90,000. So, there are budget constraints that we're working within.
Okay, thank you. Right, I've got councillor Phillips first.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to, I just feel as though there's a bit of a mismatch here. So, the Environment Agency, are they the agency that are planning to turn this into a wetland area?
Is that what you're going to say? You're muted, Karen.
Apologies. That's not my understanding, no. I think that's, I think they would certainly support it and be involved in the wider endeavours of the Tame Valley proposals, but it's not their proposal. But I'm sure others within the forum will be able to answer that question better.
Okay, councillor Phillips, do you have any other questions on that?
Well, it's, I'm just a bit confused as to, we've got one party saying this has been identified as a future wetland area, and the applicant not knowing anything about it. I just feel there's a bit of a, that's a bit of a strange mismatch.
Okay, I'm going to ask the question, is it relevant to this application? I think possibly, possibly not, I'm not saying it isn't, but I'm going to have to take advice from the officers on that particular point. Caroline, can I come back to you on that point?
Yes, sir, thanks.
Because it may not be relevant to this particular application. So, I'm going to move to councillor Simpson, Vince.
Thank you. Hi, Karen. Just thinking about, somebody mentioned, I missed which councillor it was because I was scribbling notes down, about whether we look at a time limit on this site, so, for example, 30 years. Now, that then changes the dynamic slightly because that makes this temporary site that potentially then goes back to green belt at that period of time. And I would imagine that fire training 30 years ago, for example, to where it is now, is probably quite different as technology and equipment has changed. So, I guess my question is, if there was, if we decided to put a time limit on this and therefore make it temporary, would that work for the fire service whilst also then dealing with some of the issues that we might have around this site?
Yeah, thank you, Jill. And I think it was councillor Warwick that mentioned that as a possibility, which I think certainly a 30-year timeframe would be reasonable. I mean, obviously, this is a continual provision we need to make for our firefighters. But as you say, in 30 years' time, technology would have advanced and the way in which we deliver our training, no doubt, will have changed also. So, I think that would afford us enough time to ensure we're delivering the essential training now, but preparing for future training requirements.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I still haven't had an answer to your question, Caroline. I'm just waiting for that particular one. Okay, are there any other questions of Karen? I'm just going to look through my notes quickly. No, I think I'm covered on that particular point. Okay, thank you very much indeed, Karen. Okay, well, our last speaker today is Daniel Grimley, the agent. Now, obviously, there are, if we have any more questions, we've got them still available. So, Daniel, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I'm just happy to give a few observations, a few comments, if that's all right. Just going back to the comment about open cast mining. I think one of the councillors said he didn't believe that was ever happened there. Just, which I have got one of the supporting documents which does show historic maps, showing evidence of historic mining on that, around the area of the classes is that landfill. There was a comment about the drainage. It just emphasises that the runoff from the burn house, which is a contaminated material, is actually collected into a tank and will be shipped off elsewhere, off-site, to be disposed of safely elsewhere. So, there is quite an extensive provision for sorting out any wastewater, well, the wastewater that is particularly contaminated, that's part of the drainage maintenance plan. Just to go back, there has been extensive work with the ecology, which has already been mentioned, extensive conversations with the local county ecologists to come up with a strategy that does mitigate any potential problems. So, there has been a lot of work on that. Pick, 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 it is obviously an important part of the fire brigade's strategy for training. I don't know whether it was mentioned, they do actually carry out quite a bit of training already with defra, the EA, which is important, it is an existing collaborative relationship and it will look to continue. And that was one of the reasons why this site is important to the fire rescue for future collaboration between themselves and the EA. So, I think that was really about all I just wanted to add and some up on those, if that's all right.
That's fine, thank you very much indeed. Members, any questions? No? Okay. Well, look, I am going to ask Ian Marriott to come in, if you wouldn't mind, to explain a couple of points, the one being the, well, what councillor Phillips mentioned, and also the 30-year time limit. Ian, would you like to comment on those, please?
On the question about the wetland project, the chair asked whether that was relevant. I think councillor Riley raised that when he was speaking and referred to the Environment Agency intending to remove some gates. I don't know any more about it than what councillor Riley said, but I think the point he was making was that there would be some alterations to the visual context for this scheme. I don't think it was being suggested that the EA compound was going to be removed and that the rest of the area was restored, that the works were smaller scale than that. But I think the point he was making was that the visual context would be changing. But if you think that could be a matter of some weight, then you'd need to explore the detail on that. In relation to the suggestion of a 30-year time limit, councillor Warwick is right to say that the less permanent the development is, the less harm there is to the green belt. And 30 years is a long time. Sometimes mineral extraction followed by landfill, we see those sorts of timescales happening. And it is different to permanent development. However, it really is a very narrow window between a development being harmful enough that it can't be permanent and yet not so harmful that it can be allowed for 30 years. It's not intellectually impossible to reach a conclusion that this development is in that window, but it is, it is a narrow window. If there's anything else I can help with or I've missed, please let me know.
Thank you very much indeed, Ian. Okay, members, now, are there any other questions? I'm now going to go back to Sally, if there are any other technical questions you wish to raise of Sally? Members, I'm not seeing any hands up at the moment. Is there any outstanding questions for you, Sally, that we've raised?
I think, to be honest, you were going to come to me for the drainage issue, which I think has been answered by both Karen and Daniel, actually.
All right.
Yeah, I don't think otherwise I had an outstanding issue.
Okay, thank you very much indeed then. Well, in that case, members, if everybody is happy with the technical questions on this one, which is complex, there's no trace about it, then let's move into debate, to have any... Adrian?
Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, it is a very difficult balance on a site like this, isn't it? We have a green belt site and we have a building that will clearly create harm to the green belt. None of those are in dispute. I suppose the question that we've got to look at is, does the very special circumstance exist to override that green belt policy? And that's what's going to drive the debate today. I agree wholeheartedly with Ian Marriott that the 30-year suggestion I sort of muted earlier, it is a narrow window, but it does at least take away the permanency of this, of this structure and give some sort of comfort to residents that there will be an end to this. I am a little bit concerned that we're getting ourselves bogged down in what might or might not happen on the site. My understanding was, and I'm happy to be corrected, that we should be considering what is before us and only what is before us and not speculating. And as far as I can see, we should be considering the facts as presented by Sally and considering those facts balanced against the comments made by the supporters and the objectors to the application. The other issue with developing the green belts is what I used to call the sequential test. I suppose that's been overridden in terms, but has the applicant made reasonable efforts to look for a site elsewhere? And I would have thought after seven years of search, we can tick the box that says the applicant has reasonably made every effort to satisfy the requirements of the sequential test. So, I know other members are going to speak, Chair, but... So I know other members are going to speak, Chair, but from my mind, with a thirty year limit on this to give some comfort, I will be quite happy to be supporting this application and I would put it forward to be proposed to be accepted and to go to the Secretary of State, if other members are minded. But I do feel that the very special circumstances of the requirements of our fire service do meet the requirements of the NPPF. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor?
Thank you, Chair. This is a tricky one. I'm really struggling with the issue of a potential moving it a few metres to another place on the site. And Kieran didn't really answer that very well, and the previous councillor Simpson. I just feel there's more conversation to be had here. And that's why I'm a little bit reluctant and reticent to support this because I just don't think that enough conversation has taken place about a potential other position on the site. Thank you.
Very much indeed. Councillor Cook?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Well, the first thing, I'd like to agree with Mark, sorry, not with Mark, with Adrian Warwick on the situation of the very special circumstances. As you know, Chairman, in Warwick, we've had a number of applications over the years where we've had to go to the, you know, very special circumstances, et cetera. And it's quite a high bar to pass, I think. Now, this is the green belt we're talking about here. But I do actually think that that bar has been passed. I do think there are very special circumstances to allow us to grant this. But I wouldn't be granting it yet. I think there are still questions to be answered. I, for one, am still concerned about the positioning and the landscaping of this site. This is, after all, a green belt site. And actually, with the rivers, with the ponds, the lakes, et cetera, can be quite an attractive site. So I think we should be perhaps setting the benchmark for actually shielding this site and making it look, it isn't an attractive building. It's not going to ever be an attractive building, but we should perhaps be considering trying to lessen the impact of this building on the green belt. Now, whether that can be done by moving it to another part of the site or even moving it slightly, I don't know. I don't know. But I do think that we should be going, because of the sensitivity of the site, we should be going that extra mile in order to try and see if we can get the questions that have been asked in this meeting answered. So my thoughts on this, Chairman, are, I am particularly concerned about the comments that have been made about being it so close to the water, et cetera, et cetera. And I understand that the waste products will be taken off from a tank, but I am concerned by the remarks made by councillor Dervix on that. I'm not quite comfortable with this as it stands, particularly as the debate's gone on. I think there are lots of questions, and I actually agree with councillor Rolfe, that we haven't perhaps had some of the conversations that we should have had. Now, I know we're supposed to consider the application that's in front of us. I wouldn't be happy to support this application as it stands here now without getting a lot more, you know, some of those other questions answered. So, Chairman, I agree that there's very special circumstances to be made, but I think we should actually defer this to get some of those questions that members have asked answered definitively. So that's my view.
Okay, thank you, councillor Cook. Councillor Parry?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I actually concur with John Cook on this. I feel very uncomfortable about it. I think it's a typical thing. I mean, yes, it's taken seven years to get this far, but even if it's seven years and it's not quite right, that's not a reason just to steamroller it through. And let's face it, if it was any other type of application, it would have gone before the Borough Council. And there's absolutely no way the Borough Council and the Ward Member would be supporting such an initiative. And I do feel at times where, because there's the connection with Warwickshire County Council, that certain county council projects get pushed through. And I do have concerns about this. I don't think thirty years, as far as I'm concerned, thirty years, with the greatest respect, most of us on this panel won't be here in thirty years' time anyway. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, I don't think limiting it is still going to have huge harm. And I think there are still so many unanswered questions. And so I would be very happy to second John Cook's proposal for a deferment because I think we have to, it doesn't matter that it's taken seven years to get through. If we're still not happy with it after seven years, we still need more thought, more investigation. And it's the site that I have a real problem with. And I think its positioning, it should be reconsidered or at least explored further. And whilst they are very special circumstances and we all value what the fire service does, this is not a reason to push something through that isn't quite right, particularly when it's green belt. We've all got to be very satisfied that every stone has been overturned to make sure we're making the right decision.
Thank you, councillor Parry, and some sound words there. I think one point I would comment, slightly obscurely, is that we on this committee do know that we do do diligence on planning applications for the county. And, but perhaps it's still a perception that they are pushed through, but I believe is not necessarily always correct. Councillor Dervix?
Thank you. Previous speakers have covered most of, well, really everything that I was going to say. I don't think that we've spent enough time trying to find out whether there are other sites within that site that are more suitable. I certainly don't think it's suitable where it is at the moment. I can see the problems that the fire service have. We've also been made aware of plans that are being discussed or projected by the EA, but we have no details of that. This is such an important and sensitive site that I think that is incumbent on us to find out more about those before even considering whether we should pass this application. What can be done to lessen the impact of the building? You know, thirty year limit, this is a very sensitive site and that is outlined for us in the papers. I don't think a thirty year limit makes any difference at all as to whether we should or shouldn't accept this in this site. It's green belt, we as society have decided that green belt is important, that we need to protect it. And I'm really not convinced that the arguments we've got in front of us for the site of this building, exactly where it is now, is sufficient reason, special circumstance, to accept it.
Okay, thank you.
I will not be supporting either a deferment or passing this, I'm afraid, at the moment, unless I hear something different in the next few minutes.
Okay, well, I've got councillor Bell, and then I'm going to have a little chat myself. So councillor Bell. Oh, I'm sorry, I've got councillor Simpson-Bince as well. Councillor Bell first.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And I will try not to repeat what other people have said. I would like to start by saying that I really do support our great fire service, and this is not about supporting them. And actually, I have to say, some of the things that have been put forward by them whilst I support them are operational issues. They're not planning issues, they're operational issues. How much it costs to put something somewhere is not a planning issue. And so we are here, and it's good to hear all the councillors are in agreement. We're here to consider green belt issues. What is the harm? Are there special circumstances to mitigate against that harm? That's what we have to focus on. I just want to make a few things clear because there's been some questions about, you know, what is going on on that site. So it is obviously part of the Thames Valley Wetlands Trust. It features very prominently North Warwickshire Borough Council's local plan. Quote, "It is an important ecological area, which is a regional asset that needs to be proactively considered and where possible, enhanced." And also, there is something called the Thames Valley Wetland Landscape Partnership, which is a cross-agency, cross-disciplinary partnership led by Warwickshire Wildlife Trust, which objects to this application, and North Warwickshire Borough Council. They have a vision. "The Tame Valley Wetlands will be a high-quality, well-known and valued landscape, rich in wildlife, beauty and culture for all." They go on to say, "The importance of the Lee Marston Lake site to help us achieve this vision cannot be overstated." And this is relevant to what the discussion was further. Their long-time aspiration is to restore the River Tame to its original channel as it crosses the site. Most importantly, to remove the wiers, which are the last barrier to the migration of fish into neighbouring rivers, such as the River Anchor. And actually, the Environment Agency has got a restoration plan for this site, which is available, but not referenced in this report. I'm going to move on to the actual development itself. I was amazed that the report did not contain diagrams of the building. How are we supposed to consider this without seeing what it was going to look like? We have now seen it through the presentation, but really, that should have been part of the papers. This is a really important thing. And let's be clear, we are talking about putting an industrial site in the green belt because that's what it is. It's an industrial site. Let us be clear, this is not a building sensitively designed to blend in with the surroundings. It's a series of porter cabins built one on top of the other. And we've heard all about the heights, et cetera, and the highest point being twelve point seven metres on the site. That is a massive industrial development and it will be lit. And the site fencing is not going to help. It's ugly and it won't conceal the site anyway, but it's very, very ugly. I'm very worried that the Minerva unit is going to be ventilated at the end of each training session by an air extraction plant. I am very concerned about the noise of this extraction plant and I've not heard anything about that, to be honest. Now, there's so much I could say about the harm, but most of that has been, it's certainly documented in the report through North Warwickshire Borough Council's report, which is very clearly puts their objections down in planning terms. But there's one thing I should make clear, this site is in a bowl, the lakes are in a bowl. So the land around it is elevated, so the residential areas around it are elevated. So they will be able to see and they will be able to hear because of the topology of the ground. And we need to take that into account. And quite rightly, the report states, obviously it's green belt, so we start from a position of refusal. Then we have to look at the special circumstances of this. And actually, for me, what are the special circumstances? That the fire service can't find anywhere else to put it? That doesn't sound very strong to me. And I know that normally, we have to look at the proposition in front of us. But when the special circumstances is there are no other sites, then we have to look at that and say, is that justified? What are the other sites? What have they looked at? Why have they been rejected? So the paper that we had very late yesterday, I might add, gave some interesting points on this. It states there were two, which has been mentioned, two very promising sites in the rugby area. But there were discussions, pre-planning application discussions with Rugby Borough Council, which is to be lauded. That's fantastic that there was that discussion between the county and the borough. And after those discussions, it was decided that those sites were unsuitable. Fine, that's great. Why is that different from North Warwickshire Borough Council, who've been saying right from the beginning of this that this is an inappropriate site for this development? Why aren't those decisions being, why aren't those discussions being held in the same light? Because the North Warwickshire Borough Council knows this site and it knows what it's planned for. And also, it says thirty-four other sites were looked at. It was very interesting to see the reasons why those sites were rejected and to weigh those against the harm that's being done on this site. So why were those sites rejected and why wasn't this site rejected as well? Because it's not a suitable site for an industrial development. So I'd just like to say, the other thing this paper says is this site is convenient because it's next to Kingsbury site. Now, when the Kingsbury site came forward, I was part of the planning decision for that as well. We asked why the three sites that had already been identified for this training were not brought forward together. And we were told, if they're going to be seen individually, then you cannot rely on co-location if you then say, but we're going to submit the applications individually. If co-location was so important, all three sites should have been put forward together so we could have considered the whole plan for the fire service training. And I would like to just touch very briefly again on the relationship with North Warwickshire Borough Council, who obviously strongly object to this, given the substantial harm which it has set out in its report. North Warwickshire Borough Council and Warwickshire County Council actually drew up a memorandum of understanding which stated that there would be liaison meetings for potential developments in their area. If these liaison meetings had taken place in a meaningful way, then alternative sites, either on this DEFRA site or indeed on industrial sites that North Warwickshire has, could have been discussed and possibly more suitable sites could have been identified. And this is a really difficult decision we're being asked to do today. We're being asked to consider an industrial development in the green belt, even given that it is for the benefit of our fire service. And because it's for the benefit of our fire service, we need to be super diligent. And what was said, excuse me, earlier about Warwickshire County Council and its looking at its own applications, we have to be very careful. And I absolutely agree with what Anne Parry and what councillor Dervix said. And I think we need to be very careful because, quite rightly, whatever decision is made today and the way that decision is made is going to be very scrutinised, very much scrutinised by other people. So we need to be super careful. And as for the thirty years, this substantial harm, we cannot allow that to be there for thirty years. It's going to make no difference at all. It might be a way of getting around the green belt laws, but it will not help in terms of what the harm is going to be done to this site.
Councillor, I think you've had a very good time limit.
Well, I was just going to put what my view is, but if you don't want to hear it, I'll finish there. You'll know later.
No, thank you very much indeed for, I think you've thoroughly covered it, councillor Bell. Honestly, you have covered it thoroughly. Councillor Simpson-Bince, last person, and then I'm going to sum up.
Thank you, Chair. We have quite a good track record on this committee, actually, of going into minute detail on applications, asking probing questions, deferring where we don't think we've got all the answers, approving if we think we have, and we've refused things as well. So I think as a committee, we actually work quite well going through all these applications. This one is a difficult one. I don't think anybody would disagree with saying these buildings are not pretty. They are industrial, they look industrial, they're always going to look industrial. I would like to see a landscape plan round there. I think five metres of fencing, I can see why we've got the fencing, but I don't see why that can't be backed up with some trees. There are quite a few trees round that area shielding other buildings. I don't know why we don't have a landscaping plan on this, but I think that would help a lot of us in terms of this application. Whether that could be put in as part of a condition, I don't know, Ian would have to come back to us on that, or Sally. The time limit, thirty years? You could argue whether it's thirty years, twenty-five years, twenty years. But I think it is important, having something that's in the green belt, that it has a determinate amount of time. And that at some point, it will return to green belt. There's plenty of other applications that we do that with. Disagreements between North Warwickshire and county offices, quite frankly, isn't a planning issue. It has been dealt with in the report. We've got the objection from the We've got the objection from the local authorities. It's quite detailed, it's probably the longest objection that I've seen in a report from another local authority and I think it's detailed quite well. I think our speakers, obviously, who were objecting, gave quite good understanding of that as well. We get that, okay? We understand that and councillor Bell's gone through it as well. People objecting to it does bear a weight. But we have an entire application. It isn't just about disagreements with officers. And I think at some point, you know, it's one of those look at, learn from, discuss elsewhere. Who said what to who, who wrote what down, who met who, who didn't meet who? Doesn't help with this application. We have to look at what we've got in front of us. Could it go elsewhere on the site? I don't know, it was obviously picked for that spot for a reason. I'm sure they would have looked at other locations within that 0.2 hectare space. It's surrounded, well, not surrounded by, the other buildings in close proximity from the aerial shots are also industrial in nature. So it is an area of green belt that has industrial buildings on it. Interestingly, the two parish councils closest by, one didn't register an objection, the other did. And then as things changed during the application process, that seemed to water down their objections and they seemed, the things that they objected to, those points came through as not being quite so problematic for it. And I'm sure that the North Warwickshire councillors are currently screaming at me through the laptop whilst I'm saying this. Seven years, yes, it's a long time. Do we want to get this right? Yes. Do we feel that deferring it is going to change anything? I don't know, I don't know if it is. Yeah, the committee seemed to be going in one direction, but yeah.
Thank you, councillor Simpson-Bent. Okay, look, I'm going to wrap up the debate at this point because I think we have come to a conclusion. Obviously, this is a very difficult one. I mean, it is open this green belt and I'm fully supportive of green belt. On the other side, we have got a fantastic fire and rescue service and we want them to be the best that they can be through training and such like. And I fully support our fire and rescue service, so I find this particularly difficult as well. However, I have had a proposer and I have had a seconder to defer this. Now, obviously, we've got to give reasons for deferral. And those reasons, and I'm going to run this past Ian in a moment, the main ones that have come out of this are things like, for example, landscaping and obviously mitigation measures for the building. Relocation, potential relocation of that building into another area. Time limited on the site. So it can guarantee restoration of the green belt at some point in the future. Noise and light pollution. Now, I know they have been covered and I believe that everyone considers them to be covered adequately, but again, perhaps that's something that needs reiteration. And finally, ours is pollution, which has been mentioned a number of times now. Again, I've seen the chat from Kieran about that particular one and he goes over it quite thoroughly. But it is perhaps in that we can pop forward as one of the reasons to defer it and move to defer. Are there any other things, councillor Rolfe?
Yes, sorry, did you? I mentioned at the very beginning the deferment to look at, potential deferment, to look at moving it elsewhere on the site and the pros and cons on that.
Yep, that's it, yep, we're all looking at that, yep.
Thank you.
And councillor Dervics?
Thank you. I really do think that we should be asking to see what the EA plans are. Those have been revealed to us. It is a report that is in existence and I think that that is an important part of the process. It isn't that they're not there, it's just that we haven't looked at them. And nobody except for North Warwickshire seems to have looked at them. I think that that should be included in the deferment so that we can get a chance to see what is the plan there because it's a material matter.
Okay, and councillor Warwick?
Yes, Chair, just on the issue of moving it. I'd just like clarification on that. I would have thought if we were looking to move the structure, it would require a fresh application, not just an amendment to this one because it would be recited and a new application would be required. Could that just be confirmed before we look at that?
I'm sure you're right, but I'm going to ask Ian to confirm that, but I'm sure you're right. It will be probably withdrawn.
May I just add another thing, please, Chair? Is this an alternative proposition to approving the application or objection to the application?
Correct, this is a deferral. We've only had, so far, we've had a proposal and a seconder to defer this application. And I've just been summarising the reasons for deferral. And you're absolutely right, this could now be, for example, withdrawn by the fire and rescue services, if that's what they so desire, or brought back in exactly the same format. It's entirely up to them what they do in this particular case. Ian, do you want to just summarise?
Yeah. Any reason for deferral would need to be something where there is a prospect of some new information or evidence being obtained in the interval that could influence your decision. On the question of relocation, councillor Bell was correct to say that where there is a serious planning objection to a proposal, and there is in this case, and the committee report says there is an objection here. We think it's outweighed by very special circumstances, but there is an objection, it's a green belt objection. And if the case is that there's an important need for this development, then the question does arise as to whether it has to be in this location or whether there's another location that doesn't suffer from the same planning objection, particularly where another location might be available within the same general site owned by the EA. So that is a legitimate ground of inquiry on the facts of this case. And I don't think there has been a full and comprehensive answer to that question, the question particularly about relocation within the Environment Agency site. Now, it might be that the answer comes back that the EA will not play ball, that there's some very good engineering reason or other reason why it can't be located elsewhere within the sort of the campus, the compound owned by the EA. If the answer came back that relocation would be possible, then councillor Warwick is right and that would require a fresh planning application to be submitted. In relation to landscaping, there is a condition already proposed to have a landscape and ecological management plan submitted. So there is already a condition there that allows that to be addressed. But potentially, you could ask for the applicant and for Sally to come back and tell you more about what is possible and what might be achieved through landscaping and how that would affect the visuals. In relation to it being time limited, I'm not sure anybody's going to be able to tell you any more about that than you've already been told. The possibility is there, you've heard my advice on it. I don't think there's extra information that could be made available about that. On noise and light pollution, those are matters that have been looked into, they are covered in the report. But at least two speakers have mentioned noise from the filtration unit and the height of the filtration unit. And I know environmental health have looked at it, but you haven't got the detail on that as to whether they looked at that specific aspect and what they made of it. So that's potentially something you could hear more about. On pollution generally, I don't know if there's more to hear about that. I think the answer is a simple one, that there will be no pollution. But it's a matter for you to decide. And as regards Environment Agency plans, I indicated when I spoke earlier that that's potentially relevant because it could affect the visual context. But we don't really have, it's a new, well, sorry, for me, it was a new point. I may have missed something. I don't think, unless Sally knows more about it, I don't think we have detail on that in order to be able to judge its relevance and weight.
Thank you very much, Ian. Well, did you want to comment, Sally?
I didn't have detail on that document, yeah.
Okay, well, look, I've had, we've had a good debate on this one, members. And I'm practically happy with the debate and what's been proposed and seconded. I am going to move to a vote, okay? And that is to defer this item. I've had a proposer with councillor Cook and a second with councillor Parry. And I'm now going to ask members to vote using your, raising your hands if you wish to defer this, to vote for deferral. Please vote now. Thank you, members, any, okay? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right, thank you. Have you got that, Helen?
Yes, oh, yes, I have.
Okay, has everyone voted unhappy? Okay, if you remove your hands now, please. All those against the deferral? I've got some legacy hands there, I think. Okay, against deferrals? Councillor Ricard, you against it?
Yes, Chair, I'm against.
Okay, thank you. And are there any abstentions? Okay, thank you, councillor Warwick, to against it. And are there any abstentions? No, councillor Ricard is not, I'm sure, because he voted yes. Thank you very much indeed, in that case is carried. The decision this committee is to defer the item, which is a planning application NWB slash 19 CC 013. Thank you very much, members. I'm now going to suggest we have a comfort break, five minutes. If we can come back for 25 to one, I would appreciate it. Move on to the next items. Councillor Rolfe?
Yes, do we not now vote on the, whether it's, whether we object or support?
No, we've devoted to defer it.
Okay.
That's it, we can't have two votes on that. It's to defer it now, it's moved it off the agenda. It goes on to another agenda at some point in the future. Councillor Phillips?
Thank you, Chair. I just need to let you know, Chair, that I'm going to have to leave at about quarter past one.
That's fine, okay, thank you, councillor. Right, five minutes, comfort break, everybody, and I'll see you back here in, well, 25 too. Thank you. And that was, sorry, wrong one. That was to give Sally an opportunity to have a break for a few minutes, well done.
Well, everybody, I think.
That's true as well, I did need a break. And just to say also to members that Sally put a huge amount of effort into editing the drone footage. And I thought it was a really good presentation and demonstration of the site. And especially if we aren't able to physically go there. So well done, Sally, and I appreciate all the time you've put onto that. Most appreciated.
Well, and it also gave us a visual that we wouldn't get standing on the ground as well. So it was really useful, kind of the overheads and the going down roads and stuff.
Yes, yeah.
I thought it was very well done.
Very good.
Warwickshire was appreciated.
Very good.
Okay then, right. I would now like to move on to our next application, which is I would now like to move on to our next application, which is S D C slash two zero C C zero zero nine. Proposed erection of a modular classroom to replace an existing modular building, additional car parking and associated works at Henley and Arden, seat of a primary school. And that is Sally again.
Thank you, Chair. If I can just share my screen again. Again, if you can just let me know when that is viewed.
Yes, it is correct, well done.
Oh, and it's taken me all the way back to the beginning, I do apologise. Okay. Right, so this application, it's actually coming to regulatory committee for determine, because of our delegation agreement. It's as a result of education being the applicant, coming under the same director as planning. And while there is an objection from a local resident, this level of objection would, in other circumstances, result in the application being determined as, as a delegated matter. But again, because of that delegation agreement, it's coming to red committee for, for determination. The application is for a special educational needs unit on Henley and Arden School. I've certainly read here the location of, of the school. Henley and Arden is a, is a settlement excluded from the Greenbelt. So, the Greenbelt boundary is tight to the boundary of this school site. The proposal is for a special educational needs unit to be within the grounds of the primary school. Warwickshire County Council are seeking to increase the provision of special educational needs within Warwickshire to meet the county's own needs. This is for the benefit of pupils who may currently have to travel outside of Warwickshire to meet their, their education requirements. And also, it would have a cost benefit for reducing the distances that pupils are transported outside of county. The application itself is for the removal of an existing temporary classroom on the school site and its replacement with a larger modular building in the same general location. The unit would be in use for fourteen pupils with one teacher and three teaching assistants. The unit would be operated separately from the, from the school. In addition to the erection of the modular building, this proposal for the removal of an area of grass, you can see on my drawing there, so it's an area in this location that would be removed to increase the area of hard standing with five car parking spaces, including one disabled space being moved closer to the boundary and with the school. Henley and Arden is, as I say, a settlement surrounded by Greenbelt with only limited scope for residential development. As a result of that, the numbers of primary age pupils has been decreasing over recent years. There are currently a hundred and forty-three pupils at the school with twenty staff. They, the school operates at present with five classes, where year groups are joined together in a class. And this is due to be reduced to four classes when the current year six pupils leave. I think the situation at present is in year five and year six. There are twenty odd number of pupils in each, so they can't amalgamate them into a class that, where the limit is thirty. So, there will be a reduction to four combined year group classes. And these will be nursing reception, year one and year two in a class, year three and year four in a class, and years five and six sharing a class. With the pupil numbers and the number of teachers on the school site itself being reduced, and with the addition of fourteen pupils at the send unit and their staff, there wouldn't be an increase in numbers of either staff or pupils above those currently on site. The impact of the building itself, the new building, the send unit has windows proposed in the side elevation. If I just take you through a couple of my drawings and plans, actually. So, the existing building is in this location here and is to be replaced with a larger building on the same general footprint area. The building itself, as I say, is, it's currently has no windows on the side elevation. It has a door and a high level window. And the replacement building would have windows on this side elevation facing towards the neighbouring Castle Road. I did receive comment from the neighbouring Castle Road concerned at the possibility of overlooking. The previous building was a distance of thirty-seven metres to the, to the rear of the neighbouring property. And this distance will be reduced to thirty metres, as you can see on my plan there. The Stratford District Council's residential separation standard, I've used it as a yardstick here, this is obviously not a residential to residential scenario. It's a single storey building of the school against a residential property. But the distance that Stratford District accept is between two storey dwellings back to back is twenty-one metres or twenty-seven metres between three storey, and we have a thirty metre separation distance here. So, on those grounds, it's not considered to be an issue of overlooking. There is replacement tree planting, again, I'll come back to details, but there is replacement tree planting along this boundary here proposed. And that, over time, will have the benefit of providing screening to the neighbouring properties. In terms of the immunity impact of the enlarged parking area, the hard standing areas is in, sorry, pressed the wrong button, is in this area. There's this electricity substation here. There are two, two houses in this location which have been recently constructed to replace a council garage forecourt area. The increase in the hard standing area is proposed to improve the circulation space to the front of the school. And the five parking spaces would be relocated closer to the boundary by removing that area of grass next to the entrance gates. The hard standing will come closer to the new houses in Castle Road, but there is fencing in between the two properties. And also, there's the electricity substation. In terms of access and highways issues to the school, the, there's no change proposed to the access to the school itself, which is coming in from Arden Road. Arden Road is a no-through road, and it serves both Henley School and also the neighbouring St Mary's Catholic that the peak of traffic continues across the day. I think there are probably, because there are the two schools there, there are deliveries throughout the day. But I still think the peak would be at drop-off and pick-up times, as is the problem in many areas across Warwickshire and across the country, having the peak at those two times. The arrival and end of the day times for pupils attending the send unit will stagger with the arrival and departure of school, of pupils at the main school, which would have the benefit of reducing peak traffic, it would spread it out for a longer period of time. The numbers of pupils and the numbers of staff is remaining the same. Parents or carers would be able to deliver children attending the send unit into the, into the school grounds themselves, if that was necessary, onto that hard standing area. So, there would be sufficient area for vehicle to park, manoeuvre and leave the site. I've had no objection from highways on this. I am recommending a pre-commencement condition for a construction management plan and also for a green travel plan within six months of the occupation of the send unit. Just to show how traffic is being managed and with aims to reduce the, the usage of cars. In terms of ecology on the site, there are two trees to be removed as a result of the placing of, of the send unit. I just. Sorry, I'm just going to go back, it's, there are two trees in this location here which will need to be removed. They're actually covered by the footprint of the new building. There's an older tree and a bird cherry. Six replacement trees are proposed, as I say, in the, in the area to the, to the south of the send unit. I do have an objection from the neighbour in terms of the removal of the two trees on the grounds of the impact on ecology there. The preliminary ecological appraisal submitted with the application, though, did inform that while bats may be foraging in the tree line to this, to the very north of the school grounds, so it's beyond the school playing field, they're unlikely to be in the trees that are to be removed. And they raised no objection from ecology, subject to a tree protection plan and also recommending a condition that the replacement trees are planted and maintained. In terms of drainage, this, the building is in flood zone one, so there's no risk of fluvial flooding. And the drainage is proposed to be connected to the existing facilities on site. In terms of heritage, the conservation area is located immediate to the north of the school grounds. And there's a raised area, a hill to the north of the school grounds also, which is a scheduled monument site of the Bodersirk Castle. There are views from that, from the hill back down into the school site. And I do have some photos to show that in a few minutes. There is vegetation on the, the neighbouring site, which does screen into, views into the school site. And there's been assessed to be no adverse impact on the setting of the heritage assets. So, if I can just take you through the photos a bit more. So, it's a couple of, two classrooms are proposed in the development, one for key stage one and one for key stage two children. The building would be timber clad with white PVC windows, sorry, aluminium windows, beg your pardon. It's a flat roof structure with windows on both the north and south facing elevations. The trees, replacement trees are proposed to be planted on here. And there are two, the cherry tree and the older tree to be removed to the north. This is Arden Road looking north towards the school. You can see the raised area of the Bodersirk area at the back of the school, you can just see the line of the hill. The two replacement houses that have been built in the last year or so are, have replaced a garage, garage area, council garage area. The electricity substation is just to the rear of that. This is the access at the head of the cul-de-sac there, entrance into St Mary's Catholic School, the neighbouring school. And this is the entrance into Henley and Arden School. This is the electricity substation, and this is the view of the area of grass that will be removed. The original plans that came in came right up to the boundary. And in order to preserve the sycamore tree here, to ensure there's no root damage, the parking area has been moved away, so there will be a strip of grass retained in that location. This is the rear of the electricity substation and the boundary fence, this is the area of grass that will be removed. Again, showing the existing park in which will just be moved across. And you can see the building in the background that is to be removed, the existing temporary classroom. The proposed building will actually come as far as, there's a covered area here, and the proposed building will come to about this point. This is a view of the rear elevations of the two new properties and showing the grassed area again that will be removed. And the sycamore tree at the entrance gate. The existing temporary classroom has a play area to the side, the new building will come down as, as far as this fence. And that's a view over the lean-to structure. And the neighbouring property is, is viewed in the distance, in sort of the overlooking distances. This is the north elevation of the building and the two trees that are required to be removed. And this is a view across the playing field, looking west towards the, the rear of the existing classroom with the scheduled monument site in the background and the conservation area. So, a view from outside the site, there's a public footpath that runs around the perimeter of the school fence. So, there is a view into the school grounds from, from publicly accessible point. And then, this is the view from the, from the hill to the, to the north of the school site. As I say, there is vegetation there that screens views across into the school site. And I've taken the photos there, you can see the, the building to be replaced is, is this one here. This is a view from the public footpath running around the northern boundary of the school site, looking back into the school. And that's the building to be removed. The new building will come just slightly further forward. That's my photo presentation. The application is recommended to be approved subject to conditions to ensure that the, the replacement trees are planted and the tree protection plan, also for the green travel plan within six months of the occupation of the building.
Thank you very much, Sally. Oh, you've got a bit of feedback there. No drone footage this time?
I'm afraid not. I did go up the hill, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a couple of questions, if I may, on that, you mentioned about the school size, school numbers reducing at, at the primary school. But will that affect the S E N D children attending? Because I believe they'll be coming in from a wider catchment area, is that correct?
They will, it's, the facility is designed for fourteen pupils, they're coming in independently of Henley School. So, that it's, it's a separate unit, separate facility, so they are coming in from elsewhere in Warwickshire.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Rickards?
Thanks, Chair. I just want to be clear about the staggering of the drop-off and start times. Is it proposed that they would be part of the green travel plan, they would be determined then? Because we don't have any detail at the moment, do we?
No, the pupils generally from the special educational needs unit would, would be arriving after the main school is opened. So, they'll be brought in by, by parents or by taxi and delivered to the school grounds and leaving at a different time as well. So, the, the green travel plan is intended really to cover the, the whole school site.
Okay, councillor off?
One of the trees, the youngest tree, just for your information, is a tree that I planted twenty-five years ago.
Eight years ago.
As the Chair of P T A. I have a picture on my wall somewhere showing me actually digging the ground for that tree. But that's all right, I don't take offence. And the other point I wanted to make, I think it's quite sad to see a school reducing in numbers. I know that when, when my children were there, we fought very, very hard to increase the numbers. And I think we got up to seven classes for seven years. That was just the, the points I wanted to make. And as long as the tree's going to be replaced, I have no, I won't take it personally.
Yeah, it is to be replaced, there are six, six trees to go in, yes.
Would you like the tree, Kate?
No, thank you. Don't have room for it.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Dervix?
Thank you, I just think it's, it's important to make sure that the trees are a reasonable size. You know, we can easily be fobbed off with, with small trees. And they're, they're not always very long-lived when that happens. And the other point is about green travel plans. They're very important for schools and so on, but we have to recognise that they, with a, a unit like this, it will change regularly all the time because the pupils will be changing. Hopefully, they will be reaching the stage where they go to other places at odd times of the year. When you're dealing with these sorts of pupils, you don't deal in academic years.
Thank you very much, councillor. Okay, I have registered to speak, I have Tony Matthews, are you available, Mr Matthews?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, thank you. Okay then.
I'm on as well.
Okay, thank you. You have three minutes in your own time.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak and thank you Sally for all the preliminary work and support you've given me. Yes, I, I appreciate the presentation. I don't think, really feel it covers my concerns, so I'm grateful for these three minutes. Uh, yes, you've mentioned the trees. I think it's a great shame those trees have got to go. Uh, despite what the tree report says, bats do use those trees and I have seen them flying in and out of those trees. So whether they actually nest in there, I'm not sure. I'm not a bat expert, but I think that's a great pity. Uh, trees have got to go. Uh, you give me three minutes, I, I, I'll quickly go over my major concern. Uh, I don't like the fact that they're wooden huts. I can't understand why we're replacing one wooden hut that's there already with one that's twice the size. Especially when the existing wooden hut looked perfectly reasonable condition. Why that can't be refurbished is a question. I'd like the developer to answer. Uh, but my primary um objection is about the chaos that this is going to cause at my end as a neighbour of Arden Road, traffic wise. When the schools were built thirty odd years ago, traffic wasn't an issue. Uh, most people, it was a village school, most people walked to school. Now it is absolute chaos and carnage at school times. Now, at the moment, the rules are uh that you don't allow to bring your children into the school areas from either school. The adjacent St Mary's School or the Church of England School where the SEND unit is proposed for. So, but even so, it's still very, very busy. But with this um SEND unit, it's proposed of fourteen vehicles, up to fourteen vehicles, assuming each parent brings a child in or by taxi. Fourteen additional veh- vehicles will be transversing Arden Road morning and afternoon. Now those vehicles, as Sally mentioned, it's a cul-de-sac, except there's no turning area. The proposal is to move the car parking spaces to free up space where these fourteen vehicles potentially can turn round. I think that's going to be chaos because the width of the school gates only allows one vehicle in any other vehicle committing. So it's going to lead to total gridlock, uh, as far as I'm concerned. Another question I'd like to develop to ask, dropping off is fairly short timescale. You drop off, you open the door, you help the children out, I don't know if anyone will be wheelchair bound or whatever, but that's quite a quick turnaround. Pickup time in the evening is totally a different matter. You've got, you're going to get there early, where are these fourteen vehicles?
Thirty seconds please.
Okay, um, and that's really, the other, the other question is, I don't think it's been thoroughly explored why we can't um refurbish the existing SEND unit, which is only, uh, the existing bathroom, which is only a couple of years old. And um, that's uh, one last question. Henley High School is less than a quarter of a mile away, four acres, why can't we put it there?
Thank you very much indeed. Absolutely spot on timing. Thank you very much, Mr Matthews.
Thank you for the opportunity.
It's okay. Um, right, members, have you any questions you'd like to ask of Mr Matthews? He got off lightly there, thank you very much. Right, if I could ask you to mute your microphone, please, I appreciate it. Okay, um, right then, I now have um our supporters, which is Samvia Diarra and Alison Fowler and Jonathan Warren, who wish to speak.
Uh, I'm Alison Fowler, I'm from Strategic Assets in Warwickshire County Council. Um, Jonathan might be able to answer a couple of the questions around the design. Uh, other than that, uh, there is no further comment to make unless it's to do with any of the vehicle movements.
Well, I think then in that case then, members, are there any questions that you would like to ask of Alison or the others? Obviously, the first one will be the type of building and why, uh, I, I think, uh, Mr Matthew said, why isn't the same building being used? And the other one is what the type of construction. So would you like to just answer that, please, Alison?
Uh, that, I'll defer that to Jonathan, who has actually looked at that part of it. If you can answer that, Jonathan, please.
Sorry, uh, Jonathan's had to disappear. Um, I've had to sit in for him. Um, he's, he's had, he's got another meeting on, so.
All right then Chris, if you can um provide the information about the design, please.
Um, in, in terms of uh what we've proposed, um, we've obviously put together a modular building um in uh, in relation to what the school have asked us to, to provide for them. Um, so in terms of the increase in, in size, um obviously that has been necessary with the, the types of room that, that they require for that specialist unit. Um, which hasn't really, we can't really use what we have there at the minute to provide that um infrastructure for the, for the children. In terms of um, in terms of the aesthetics of the building, we, we've gone for a timber cladding to sit within uh, obviously the, how the school, how the school is viewed. Um, so you, you've got obviously your forest and your, your, your background of trees and greenery. Um, and we've tried to sort of blend in as much as we can with that.
Right, then there are another couple of points. Um, so first of all, did you, you didn't actually say why we can't refurbish the existing one? Is it because of the, the requirements, modern requirements?
It, it, it is, yeah, be- because of the, the size of classrooms that we need, because of um the types of rooms that, that we, we have in that unit. Um, trying to refurbish, refurbish that to, to add the likes of a kitchen and the nurturing and to have the sizes available. Um, we, we, we have looked at, at trying to refurbish it, but you, you'd be better off expanding to, or taking it down to then put in a new, a new unit.
Okay, thank you. The other points picked, uh, mentioned were the drop off and pickup times. Could you just, I know it's included in Sally's report, but would someone like just comment on that?
Uh, I can comment on that um to the committee. Uh, what the head teacher has advised us, as has education around SEND students, is that um the uh drop off is uh later on, as Sally has stated, uh, in the drop off time. So there is a period of drop off between, say, half past eight, half past nine. The chances are that those children will be dropped off much later when all of the other students are in school. And the actual pickup time will be before any of the other students, um, parents or guardians or pickup uh, excuse me, uh, period commences for the nor-, uh, for the other students that are up at school. So in actual fact, what we're doing, I suppose, is extending the drop off pickup time, but smoothing out the uh vehicle movement um be- because of the number of vehicles. So we'll have a longer period um, um to accommodate um the additional vehicles taking on board that in actual fact, the um, there is no increase overall.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Phillips?
Thank you Chair. I just wondered if you could uh give me more details about the pickup of these children. Um, because Mr Matthews expressed concern that you would have fourteen vehicles or potentially have fourteen vehicles there at one time. Thank you.
They wouldn't, there wouldn't be fourteen at any one time. Uh, the head teacher would be arranging for a staggered pickup. That wouldn't conflict, that wouldn't conflict with the normal student movement.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Members, are there any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much indeed. In which case then, um, are there any technical questions that you would like to ask? I've got a no on that one, thank you. Let's move into debate. Council Dervics?
Sorry, my, my question is about management during the building, really. Um, you know, i- i- is there a plan in place already? And what timescales are we talking about? Because, and, you know, are we talking about lifting out a building with a crane? Or, and, and, you know, replacing it with modular units? Or are we talking about building from scratch, which obviously takes longer, but doesn't use quite such big um traffic uh, and equipment?
Um, Sam, I think we will be doing um the work over the summer period when the children are not at school. Um, we would, as far as I'm aware, that's the plan. And uh, obviously there will be a less movement around that period. Um, and I think that the existing building will be removed off-site in sections. And the new modular building will be um taken to site in sections and built out in sections.
That's correct Alison, yeah. Okay, thank you. Right, okay, now we'll enter into debate, if that's okay. Council Ross, you did have your hand up.
Um, uh, I, actually it was a point of clarification, which has just been answered about the timings of build. Thank you.
Okay then, in that case then, uh, I will now move into debate on this. Who would like to start? Well, I'm going to start then. I will say that obviously we have got a requirement as a council for provision of special educational needs services for our children. Uh, and obviously this is an existing facility as well. And we are trying to keep the children in Warwickshire as opposed to going outside as well. And that was raised at a very interesting seminar, internal seminar just the other week. Uh, so I, again, I, I have no problems about the principle of this. I suppose the concerns come down to um immunity for neighbours. Are we, are we harming the immunity for neighbours? Again, if this is managed well, then I don't feel that there is actually a significant increase or increase at all perhaps. It is a school and we get this quite frequently, don't we, members, uh, of this committee? That uh, the pickup and drop off times can be a very, very awkward time for, for neighbours. Um, but again, we can't really help that. It, that's the, the nature of the beast in this particular case. I have no personal um objections to this scheme and I'm more than happy to propose it. Any other members wish to speak? Council Simpson-Bince?
I'm happy to second that Chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members wish to speak on this? No? In that case then, members, we do have a proposer, myself, and we do have a seconder, Council Simpson-Bince. Uh, could I ask all members uh to vote in favour of this application now, please? Have you got that Helen?
Yes.
Thank you. Against? And abstentions? Now this unanimous, um, this committee therefore resolves to grant planning permission for uh, application SDC slash two zero CC zero zero nine, and thank you very much indeed. Okay, let us now move on to our last item on the agenda. Quite a long day today, so well done everybody for those who've been able to stick with us. And it's for planning application NBB slash two zero CC zero zero five. And Matthew is our presenting officer on this one.
Good afternoon. Um, I'll just try and share my screen with you. Oh, sorry, I think I've just shared.
That looks interesting, Matthew.
Bear with me. Uh, I have a problem.
You do? I don't think you have your slider.
No, I have a problem here. Right, I think I'm going to have to leave and just come back to you if that's okay.
Okay.
Matthew, some, sometimes if you uh stop sharing and then reshare, you'll, you might, you might get the, the result you're looking for. You've just got to reshare the right screen.
I would like to be able to stop sharing, but it's not offering me that option. Uh, just bear with me.
Apart from that very initial moment, I think that's our first technical glitch today, isn't it guys? I think we've done very well.
I think we're missing a drone.
Absolutely. Has he gone completely now?
Hello, do you have me back?
Yay!
Apologies for that. Now let me try again. Right.
Hey!
Are you getting a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, apologies. That's uh, not me for six actually. Uh, slideshow, fun beginning. Okay, this item relates to, uh, it's a school application and it's a fence uh, application. And it's another one of these applications, although it's only a fence, all applications relating to schools have to come before you as a committee for determination. This application relates to the uh former Royal National Institute of the Blind Peir Centre, which is in Ash Green in Bedworth. This was a site that was developed a number of years ago as um on part of what is the Exel Grange Specialist School site. And the, if I just show you there, this is an aerial shot of the two sites together. So you have Exel Grange School in this location and then at the northern end of the site, and this location here, which is the Peirs Centre site. The um Peirs Centre includes a uh school building in this location here, an administration block in this location here. There are five residential um bungalows in this location. And then at the far side or at the rear of the site is a hydrotherapy pool. The Warwickshire County Council purchased the uh Peir site in two thousand and nineteen with a view to converting the site to a predominantly special education needs site. And it's part of the overall drive for the county council to improve special education needs provision across the county. The um, the wider development is going to include some uh social care so, certainly administration uses across the site, but, but that's still in development. The uh hydrotherapy pool itself, which is, as I say, at the rear of the site and is in this location here, is something that is not required for use as part of the Peirs site. And the proposal is that that's transferred to form part of the Exel Grange School provision. And that's where this application comes in at the moment. So the proposals for the Peirs site are in essence a repurposing of the site for reuse. And the uh proposals are being undertaken in a phased manner. So phase one is the application before you, which is a fencing proposal, which would segregate the hydrotherapy pool from the Peirs site, so it becomes within the domain of Exel Grange School. Phase two is a proposal to convert the um school building on the site to a special education needs school. And that is an application that is with us at the moment and we're looking at um, and will come before you at a later date for determination. And that proposal includes um the provision of additional car parking on the site, sports pitches, including a multi-use play area. Sports pitches, including a multi-use play area and fencing around the site. And phase three relates to the bungalows and admin building on the site. Which will be used for administration purposes and some social care use. But as I say, that, the phase three element is still in development and will be a future application. So the proposal before you is for the fencing only. And if I go into the plans, which might be easier to explain it, that's the overall site. And then we have the fencing elements before you. The, um, site has existing fencing around the boundary, which is this red line in this location. Around the outside here. And the proposal is, so that the hydrotherapy pool can be incorporated within the site. Additional fencing is put in place along this line here. So that the hydrotherapy ball is segregated from the Pear's site. The proposed fencing would be two point seven five metres high, and it would be weld-mash fencing coloured green. Um, this would, as I say, at each end meet with existing fencing around the site. Um, and extend around the hydrotherapy building. The overall fence length would be around ninety metres in length overall. And it would also include, at the moment, there is, uh, a tarmac roadway goes through the site. Uh, between the hydrotherapy ball and the Exel Grange site. The fence would have two gateways placed in it at each end. Uh, these would be for emergency access purposes only should the need arise. Um. In terms of, if I just show you what we're talking about of a fence, it's a weld-mash style fence. And it, it, it's, it's that style that you see there, of which there is existing on site. Just to show you where we're talking about, that is the hydrotherapy pool building, which is only a few years old. Uh, not unpleasant in style and design, uh, wooden clad, as you can see. And the fence would come around, uh, this side of the building on these two elevations. And this is just the other side of the building where it faces on to the roadway that goes through the site. And then just again, another elevation, and the fence line would go down this side of the building. Approximately three metres away from the building. And then just around the rear again, so you'd have a fence line going down this side here. And then, this is showing the existing fence on the site. So it, the style of fence is already on the site and it would tie into this fence to go around the building. And again, this is just, the, the building to itself is to the left here, so that's just showing the existing fencing inside. As I say, uh, the proposed fencing is to segregate the, um, hydrotherapy pool from the rest of the site. And it, uh, as a fence, is a style that's already used on the, um, site. And it's not incongruous in its setting, and it wouldn't have any greater impact. One key issue that has arisen with this is that with the fence segregating the hydropool, uh, the hydrotherapy pool from the rest of the site. It also means that it cuts across this internal roadway, uh, across the site. Now, if I go back to the aerial shot, you'll see here that there is an existing car park area. In the northern corner of the site. And the proposed fence would mean cutting that car parking off from the existing school site. This is a concern to your highway officers in that, um, if the school site should come back into use, uh, immediately. Potentially, with the new fence in place, there would be a shortage of parking on the site. Um, which could cause problems in terms of parking and traffic management on the site, which ultimately could result in congestion on the highway. The phase two proposals that we're currently looking at and will come before you at a later date, actually do seek to address this. And within that, there will be additional car parking, um, coming, uh, forward as part of that proposal. However, in order to ensure that, um, should the school site be used again before. The phase two application is determined and the new car, car parking is provided. A condition is proposed as part of this, uh, application. So that, um, the Pear's site could not be brought into use again. Without the additional car parking situation being addressed. And a condition is proposed to resolve that problem. Uh, and, and that's considered to be a, um, satisfactory resolution of that issue. Um, so i- i- in, in conclusion, it, it's, it's a relatively straightforward proposal, hopefully. It's part of a wider package to repurpose this site and bring it back into use. Um, and.